Good evening, everyone. We'd like to go ahead and welcome you to the Fruta City Council meeting. The time is now seven oh one P M. We're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. Deb, would you please call role?
Counsel Bremen.
Here.
And so Perser.
Here.
Counsel Williams is excused absent. Counselor Cry.
Here.
Counsel Miller.
Present.
Counsel Hansi.
Here.
All right, we'd like to move into our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. If you'd please stand with us. We'd like to take a moment of silence to allow all faiths and beliefs the opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have one change to the agenda. We added consent agenda item six E. Boards and commissions appointment of Mark Hamlin to the Tourism Advisory Council.
All right, any other changes?
No other changes.
All right. Is there anything else from counsel? Or do we have a motion to approve?
Removed. Again.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
I.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Hansi. Motion passes five zero.
All right, with that, we're gonna move into our proclamations and presentations. We have a few of those tonight. And so the first one is our fruit of teacher student of the month for May twenty twenty three, and it's Fruit Monument High School. I find it easier if I come down front, and I've asked Aaron Hansi to help me. All right, it's our privilege as city council to be able to recognize our D fifty one. Know where you're going yet?
Yes.
All right, just check. All right, to recognize our D fifty one schools here out in Fruta. And so tonight, it's our opportunity to recognize students from the high school. So and I see we've got some people here. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read your name, and I've got a short thing that was written for you. And then have you come up here. We've got a community center pass to give out to each one of you. And then we've got a I hurt Fruta button to give out as well. And then we'd ask you to stay up here until I think everybody wants photos. So we normally take a few minutes to let you get your photos in. So outstanding student for the month of May twenty twenty three is Anna Paul. Anna is graduating ranked number one in the FMHS class of twenty twenty three with a four point four five one GPA. She'll have taken fourteen advanced placement courses when she graduates. Anna is the captain of our nationally ranked Palms team, is a member of our Fruta Medical Missions Abroad Club, Key Club, and National Honor Society. Anna has been accepted to Colorado College and is waiting to hear from Princeton and Northwestern before making a decision on where to pursue her degree in neuroscience and pre-med. Anna is being recognized by the Fruta City Council for outstanding academic achievement and excellence. Thank you for making us proud. All right, and our next is the outstanding teacher for the month of May twenty twenty three. We've got Chris Harvey. Chris Harvey has been selected by the class of twenty twenty three as a senior class teacher of the year. Mr. Harvey teaches AP Modern World and American Government. Mr. Harvey was also selected by his colleagues to serve on the FMHS Shared Decision Team and sponsors the Wildcat Hiking Club. He has been a social studies teacher at FMHS for the past six years and has been in public education for eleven. He will speak at this year's commencement ceremony on behalf of the class of twenty twenty three. In recognition of your dedication, passion, and hard work, thanks for all you do. So if anybody wants photos, and then I don't know if Todd wants to say anything, or are you? You sure? All right, let's give him another round of applause. All right, our next proclamation is proclaiming May sixth through twelfth twenty twenty three as Teacher Appreciation Week, and I've asked Janine to read that one for us.
Whereas Mesa County Valley School District fifty one employs two thousand seven hundred eighty teachers and staff currently serving twenty thousand eight hundred fifty one students in forty seven schools throughout the Grand Valley. And whereas teachers work hard in schools throughout the nation every day to provide a safe, high-quality and stable learning environment for children. And whereas the education teachers provide has the power to strengthen our economy and our society as a whole by growing students who graduate prepared to become successful members of society and the workplace. And whereas our future is written in schools across the country, and teachers should be held in high public esteem, reflecting the value placed in their skills and abilities and the importance of public education. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fruta City Council proclaims May eighth through twelfth twenty twenty three as Teacher Appreciation Week. Throughout this community and calls upon all members of our community to express their appreciation for the educators who engage, equip, and empower our learning community today for a limitless tomorrow.
All right, I think we've got Andrea Creves from the D fifty one foundation here.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Creves with the D fifty one foundation, and on behalf of the D fifty one foundation, I want to thank you for honoring teachers in District fifty one with this proclamation of appreciation and acknowledgement of their important work in our community. The Fruta City Council is joining other municipalities throughout Mesa County in honoring the good work of our teachers day in and day out. And joining me here tonight to receive this award is a wonderful principal from Fruta who I will let introduce himself and say a few words if you'd like.
Let him say a few more words, right?
All right, are we ready for a long meeting? No? Well, thank you on behalf of Fruta Monument High School and all the teachers in our Fruta schools. I mean, we're very grateful to serve in a community that really values education. It helps make our schools as great as they are. We have students that come every day, ready to learn, teachers that show up every day, whether it's in a traditional classroom, National Honor Society, Future Business Leaders of America, Future Farmers of America. Our teachers are there to support them and to help them pursue their passion and achieve to the highest level. And so, you know, I know you hear a lot of things these days on TV and radio about how crazy schools are. I would invite you to walk into a school, sit in a classroom, and judge for yourself. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Todd and Andrea, we've got a certificate for you.
Are you on another photo? Don't worry, we photobomb every photo here, so. All right, our next proclamation is proclaiming May fifteen twenty twenty three as Peace Office Memorial Day. And I think I've got asked Amy to read, or no, which one? Ken's reading that one. All right.
All right. Whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of our local law enforcement agencies, to include the Mesa County Sheriff's Office, the Grand Junction Police Department, the Palisade Police Department, the Fruta Police Department, Colburn Marshall's Office, Tabeck Marshall's Office, and the Colorado State Patrol. And whereas approximately fifty five thousand assaults against law enforcement officers are reported on average each year, resulting in more than sixteen thousand injuries. And whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty six, more than twenty three thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including five from local law enforcement agencies. Mesa County Sheriff Deputy Edward Ennis was killed on September twenty seventh nineteen oh six during an inmate jail escape. Colorado State Patrol Sergeant Wesley Rosette was killed in a crash on January thirty first nineteen fifty one. Fruta Police Department Acting Chief Dan Dally was killed in a motorcycle crash in June two thousand and one. Deputy Derek Gere of the Mesa County Sheriff's Office died after being shot by an armed suspect in February of twenty sixteen. Sergeant Wayne Wyler lost his battle to COVID nineteen in December of twenty twenty one. And where's the names of these individuals? The names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas two hundred twenty four officers were killed in line of duty in twenty twenty three, seven of whom were fallen Colorado heroes. Officer Dylan Michael Vikoff of the Arvada Police Department, Officer James Miller Campbell of the Colorado Gammon Fish Department, Officer Robert Eugene Sandoval of the Denver Police Department, Officer Peter A Walsh of the Denver Police Department, Officer Sank Frank Sam Petestio of the Denver Police Department, Deputy Andrew Stephen Perry of the El Paso County Sheriff's Office, and Under Sheriff Marion Ernest Sanders of the El Paso County Sheriff's Office. Their names will be added to the National Law Enforcement Law Officers Memorial located in Washington, DC this year. And whereas May fifteenth is designed designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week of May fifteenth through May twenty first twenty twenty three is National Police Week. Therefore, be it resolved that the Fruta City Council formally designates May fifteenth through May twenty first twenty twenty three as National Police Week in the city of Fruta and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation.
All right, we've got our police chief Dave Kraus here to accept this one.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to thank you for recognizing this week for us and the Peace Officer Memorial Day. We are humbled every time this year when this time comes around. And, you know, we get the accolades and the food that is brought into the station and all the goodies that people bring to us and the appreciation, but we know every day that we're the lucky ones to be honored to serve this community. So it's very humbling and very appreciated. Not only some of those names on the list, Danny, Derek, and Wayne. Not only were they colleagues, they were personal friends of mine. So it's meaningful for me every year to hear them being recognized and remembered as well on Memorial Day. So appreciate that. As always, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize all of the amazing partnerships and relationships we have here, not only in Fruta, but with a lot of organizations and other law enforcement agencies throughout the county that we collaborate with. So on behalf of all of them as well, thank you for the recognition.
All right, in our next item, we've got a presentation. I don't know how much of a presentation from United Way of Mesa County. Oh, I did skip a proclamation. See? All right, all right, I'm sorry. I skipped one proclamation. You're right, proclaiming. Oh, no, that one's after.
I can.
Oh.
Oh, it's just in.
It's in a different order. Yeah, I'm following my order. Don't throw me off here. All right, so our next one is Presentation United Way of Mesa County, and I know Zeb Miracle was supposed to be here, but I think Matthew's taking over for this one.
I will gladly take his place. I will not do a great as well as he would have. As a former board member and president of United Way, it is actually my honor to recognize the staff and employees of the city of Fruta. They received the Spirit of Giving Award for the greatest increase for donation workplace campaign to United Way this year. So and just so everybody knows, United Way of Mesa County, all the money raised here stays here. They serve about fifty thousand people just here in Mesa County and support thirty three nonprofits in the area. So just some of the highlights, they focus on health, education, and self-reliance. So on behalf of United Way, Shannon, you get to come up and receive this award.
Did you want to say a few words? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mayor Proton Bremen. Yeah, this is a great honor to be received by the city of Fruta. Just want to thank all of our employees and staff that contribute to United Way. As Mayor Proton Bremen was saying, this is due to the biggest year-over-year increase. And at the end of each year, we offer employees to contribute to United Way. So very thankful that they're doing that and of course, supporting a great cause and a great organization in Mesa County. So on behalf of the Administration Department, Human Resources Department, very excited to receive this. And of course, on behalf of the staff as well. So thank you, United Way.
Thank you.
Oh, we're coming down for this. All right, now, as Counsel Miller pointed out, I think we have one more proclamation tonight. And that's proclaiming May twenty twenty three as Grand Valley Bike Month. So you can go ahead and read that one.
Thank you. Whereas Colorado is a premier bicycling state, and the city of Fruta offers some of the best bicycling opportunities in the country. And whereas Mesa County has designated May as Bike Month to celebrate bicycling for transportation, fun, and health. And whereas bicycling truly adds to Fruta's small-town atmosphere by enjoying the experience of fun and freedom of safely riding a bike to work, school, on errands, and for recreation. And whereas the city of Fruta has gained a worldwide reputation as a mecca for mountain biking and outstanding road biking. And whereas the city of Fruta proudly aspires to hold the title of Trails Captain of the World for its celebrated mountain biking trails on Eighteen Road, the Coacapelli area, and the expansion of the Colorado Riverfront Trail. And whereas bicycling activities and attractions have a positive impact on the city of Fruta's economy and tourism industry and stimulates economic development by making the area attractive to businesses and citizens who enjoy the outdoors and healthy lifestyles. And whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life to boost community spirit, to improve traffic safety, and to reduce pollution and congestion. And whereas the city of Fruta will be promoting the following bicycling activities in May. Would you like me to read all of those?
Sure.
Okay. There's lots of opportunities, you guys. Wednesday, May third, is the kickoff Bike to Work Day with a free breakfast in Fruta, followed with a bike ride along the new wayfinding routes. Breakfast is provided by Einstein Bagels and coffee from Best Slope from seven to eight AM at the Fruta Civic Center. Enjoy a group ride after breakfast led by Fruta city staff and the mayor. Pick from three different routes. Meet by the stage. Friday, May nineteenth, Mesa County Library Fruta Branch Pedal Party from three to five PM at the Fruta Community Center backyard. Ride into readings. Celebrate with us as we get ready for summer reading in a bicycle-themed, family-friendly pedal party. There will be fun games and other activities for families with children of all ages. Sunday, May twenty first, will be yoga for bikes from nine to eleven AM on Fruta Civic Center lawn. Enjoy a morning yoga session on the lawn and raise funds for Grand Valley Youth Cycling. Part of the proceeds raised will help to provide positive youth development from the seat of a mountain bike. Grand Valley Youth Cycling utilizes funds to help provide scholarships to participants and provide training for volunteer coaches. There is, there are tickets available for fifteen dollars online at www-anywhereyogi.com. Now, therefore, we, the Fruta City Council, hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty three as Grand Valley Bike Month and Wednesday, May third, twenty twenty three, as Bike to Work Day in the city of Fruta and call upon all citizens to participate in bicycling activities for improved health and community well-being.
All right, thank you. And we've got our Parks and Rec Director Mark Mancuso here to accept this one. I see he's got a speech written, so.
For you guys.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for allowing us to have the Bike to Work Month. There's a lot more biking events that are taking place. I had to condense it down to one page, and you saw the font got really small to to fit everything on there. So Mesa County Libraries is really excited for the pedal party. We have the new Story Walk. And so they're trying to highlight that. And so getting folks on bikes and getting them active to see that is really cool at the community center. So if you haven't been by, please go out and take a look at that. But like I said, there's a lot more events happening around the Grand Valley and Fruta. But we highlighted a few of them there, so.
Where can we find that list?
It's, I will get that out. There is a couple PDFs that were sent from Mesa County Transit. So yeah, we'll get that out to you guys. So I enjoy biking so much. That's, that's my happy place. And that is, you know, where I, I, I relax. And this quote I'll leave you guys with is, "You're one ride away from a good mood." So Sarah Bentley from, she's a British cyclist, so it sums it up right there. Get on a bike and, you know, you're one way one way from a good mood. So thank you, guys, and hope to see you guys there tomorrow at breakfast. So.
Shake your hand for.
Procedure.
That's because. All right, we're moving into our last item in proclamation and presentation. We've got a presentation on the Fruta Tourism Advisory Council, and we've got Shannon Vassen here to present.
Oh, yeah. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I just want to do a quick round of introductions for the F-TAC members that we do have here. We have two members in person, Libby and Johanna, two of our newest members, but they've been great to work with and had made some great contributions to the F-TAC. So super excited to share with you what we've been working on. And I think we also have Caleb Brown, our chamber representative, on as well. So yeah, I'll turn it over to them. But yeah, thank you again.
Hello, I'm Libby Early, and I'm excited to talk about the F-TAC's accomplishments and all of our goals for this next year, too. As you guys may or may not be aware, the Fruta Tourism Advisory Council, our mission is to promote responsible tourism in the area where geology, paleontology, mountain biking, and other outdoor recreation resources are abundant, which is where we live. It's pretty easy to promote this place and all those fun things to do. So last year, we accomplished quite a few things. We continued a marketing partnership with the Town of Palisade. And that partnership has been referred to as the bookends of the Grand Valley. Had a consultation from the Colorado Tourism Office and worked a plan for a partnership. And now we're working on implementing those goals from the work plan. We completed a rebrand of the Play Like a Local campaign. So that's been going on for a little while, but it got a new look this year, and it's really fresh. And that also was accompanied with a redesign of the Go Fruta website. If you guys haven't seen it, it's lovely. We were also one of the three destinations featured in the twenty twenty two Connections documentary created by Stan's No Tubes and Max's Tires, which I don't know if I'm saying that right, and I feel like I'm a noob. The F-TAC awarded also mini-grants to the Kids Adventure Games, Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Colorado National Monument Association. We also funded the reprinting of the Historic Walking Tour brochure that, a joint project with the Fruta Historic Preservation Board, highlighting a lot of really cool spots along Main Street. Awarded grant funding from the Colorado Tourism Office and GOCO for new trail construction at Eighteen Road. Lots of good stuff going on out there. Our goals for twenty twenty three, we've been able to increase special event sponsorships to thirty two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. We're funding more special events than ever. We've partnered with Mesa County Public Health. And we're awarded a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from Colorado Parks and Wildlife for trail construction at Eighteen Road. We also have been participating with the Colorado Tourism Office in the creation, production, and distribution of a gravel adventure field guide. For those of you who aren't aware of what those are, they have there are a bunch of different destinations around the country where they highlight local businesses and gravel routes. It drives a lot of tourism. There's a lot of really cool illustrations and fun facts about the geology and natural elements in the area. And they've kind of become in the gravel biking community. They've kind of become collector's items. So I think I'm personally really excited to see this come, that project come to fruition and see what kind of excitement it drives around for Fruta and Palisade biking. We've also prioritized new media efforts to reach target audiences and promote travel to Fruta. We've also continued to use Sojourn to determine how marketing dollars relate to people traveling to the area. So it's giving us all kinds of really good analytics to see how long before people are deciding to travel here. They're booking their travel, how long they're deciding to stay, all kinds of good stuff that is helping us to figure out how to get more people to come here. And we're continuing to work on all of the, the work plan for the bookends of the Grand Valley partnership. So, yeah. Thank you.
You, Libby. Do you want to ask some questions, Matthew, or?
But I'm not going to.
All right.
They're nerdy data marketing questions. And you're not going to have the numbers right here.
Don't have the numbers. No.
I'm, I won't do that.
Thank you. I saw you. You looked at me like you were ready to talk. Thank you, Libby. Is there anything else, Shannon? That's, that was the quick overview. All right, we like that. I wanted to ask, so the, the trails grant that we're getting from BLM, where, what trails or what areas is that affecting?
Yeah, so the two hundred fifty thousand dollars from Parks and Wildlife. Yeah, so that's all for new trail construction out at Eighteen Road. If you remember in the North Florida Desert Master Plan, we have about thirty two miles of new trails slated to be constructed over the next several years. With the grant funding we received from Caral Tourism Office and GOCO last year, we were able to construct eight to nine miles of green or beginner-level trails. We used the Mesa County Public Health Trails Crew to build that, and also Western Caral Conservation Corp. Crew to build those. But this money from Caral Parks and Wildlife is to spend on contractor-built trails, the more difficult out of the master plan. I think there is about fourteen, fifty miles where we don't use those volunteer hours or like we did with the other two grants. This is the more intermediate to advanced-level riding that we'll have out there. So very excited to have that grant. We have two hundred fifty thousand dollars from Caral Parks and Wildlife. We chipped in forty, Greater Grand Junction Sports Commission chipped in forty, local businesses chipped in quite a bit, dentist offices also chipped in. So it's been a real community approach to that. So super excited to see what they're building out there. And one of those also includes, they started working on the high school loop, so they hope to eventually bring the mountain bike state championships here. They can do so once that loop is complete. So I think it'll be a great addition out to Eighteen Road.
Thank you.
Can I have a memory refresher? Do we have a workshop with this board or not? Just this presentation? We do have a workshop schedule. Okay, thanks.
I think it's on the twenty third.
All right, Shannon. All right, with that, we're gonna move into public participation. So this section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda. Generally, the city council will not discuss the issue, will not take an official action under this time. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something that's not on the agenda, now would be your opportunity. Yes, you state your name and address for the record, please, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Yes.
Yes. My name is Travis Schroder. I'm the pastor at Bethel Assembly of God and a member of the Grand Junction Area Ministerial Alliance. I've got two, oh, 226 Dron Leaf Drive. I've got two, two items. I would like to pray at the end of this, but one, I'd like to invite all of the council members and in all community members to this Thursday, May 4th is the National Day of Prayer, and we are hosting the Ministerial Alliance, along with some other community members are hosting a prayer event at 12:15 at the old Mesa County Courthouse. I think I said that correctly on Rude. It's interesting name for a road, but, but we would love to invite all of you to come and participate in that. We're doing it at 12:15 to give time for people during their lunch hour to come and be a part of that. And then I would like to read a scripture and pray over our council. So First Timothy 2:1 says, "I urge you first of all to pray for all people. Ask God to help them intercede on their behalf and give thanks for them. Pray this way for kings and all who are in authority, so that we can live peacefully and quiet lives marked by godliness and dignity. This is good and pleases God, our Savior, who wants everyone to be saved and to understand the truth." And I believe in praying for our community leaders and, and our community. So if you would like to join me, I'm going to pray. Heavenly Father, I just come before you today in the name of Jesus, and I just ask that you would just bless this council. Bless all of our community leaders as they guide and direct our community, and they take care of the needs of the people. Lord, I pray that you would help them in making wise decisions according to your will. And Lord, that you would just build and bolster our community. Lord, I thank you so much for the leaders that you have put in place. Lord, I thank you for the teachers, especially this week, as we recognize all the teachers and appreciate them and, and everything, especially with the turmoil that's been going on recently. And so, Lord, I just pray your blessing over all of, all of these people that you have put into place, Lord, and I thank you for everything that you have blessed us with, and I give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? Hearing none here. Is anybody online that would like to speak?
No comments online, Mr. Mayor.
All right. With that, we're going to close public participation and move into our consent agenda. So with our consent agenda, all these items are going to be approved with one motion. So with that, I'm going to open up the consent agenda to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something on the consent agenda, now would be your opportunity. Seeing none here. Is anybody online that would like to speak?
No comments online.
All right. With that, we're going to close that and bring it back to council. Are there any questions, comments, or do we have a motion?
Move to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Perser, Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Hancy. Counselor Reiman.
Hi.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. And the one item on here was our boards and commissions appointment of Mark Hamlin to the Fruta Tourism Advisory Council. So James and I interviewed him last week, and so we wanted to just recognize him as coming onto one of our boards. And so that's what I wanted to do on that one. So.
Is he here?
I don't see Mark here. So.
I was going to say thanks.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So we wanted to, I know council talked about that. We want to make sure we recognize our boards and commissions member as we bring them on with that. So with that, we're going to move it into our public hearings. So we've got two quasi judicial hearings. So both special event liquor license permits, and we've got our deputy city clerk Deb Woods here to present on the first one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the, the first one is the special event liquor permit application submitted by the Colorado Riverfront Foundation for the 2023 Summer Concert Series to be held at James M. Robb Colorado River State Park. They're doing two concerts this year. One is Friday, June 2nd, and from 5:00 to 10:00 PM, I believe Tab Benoit is playing at that one. And then Saturday, August 12th, from 5:00 to 10:00 PM also, that'll be the Bellamy Brothers. So the request to excuse me, sell beer and wine at the Summer Concert Series. All the paperwork that's required was submitted by the Riverfront Foundation. All the fees paid. A diagram in your council packet illustrates the licensed premises that is completely fenced in. And state park and security will be provided by event staff, park staff, and private security. Staff is experienced and many are tips trained and will be checking IDs. Fruta Chief of Police Dave Kraus reviewed the application and issued a statement that there is nothing that would prohibit the issuance of the license being requested. One thing I wanted to point out with this one, you, you might have noticed in the council packet that the certificate of liability insurance that normally is included with these, I was not able to get that because Michelle Warback that I work with at the Riverfront Foundation, she's out of the office until May 8th, but I will be getting that if she returns. So that I will have that on file. And therefore, it is my recommendation to the city council that the application for the special event liquor permit be approved, subject to the following conditions. One applicant will discontinue serving at 9:30 PM, allowing patrons 30 minutes to finish their beverages and leave the licensed area. Two, the licensee needs to be aware that they're solely responsible for control of the license premises in regard to alcohol possession, consumption, and adherence to state and municipal laws. And three, all other procedures presented by the Colorado Riverfront Foundation will be followed. That concludes my presentation. Ron Wilson, the owner of Sandstone Concerts, and Paul Nelson, Chair of the Colorado Riverfront Foundation are present in person this evening as the applicant's representative. So I'll turn it over to Paul and Ron for any additional comments they may have.
Hi, I'm Ron. Paul Nelson, Pete Furman over there with State Parks. We've been coming here for, I would say, a little over 20 years. Now, and this is the 25th anniversary of this concert series, started in Reed Park. And was there a couple of years? I don't know if any of you go back that far. I don't go.
One of us does.
I think they're talking about you, Matthew.
No.
Then we found a, a home at the James M. Robb Colorado River State Park when it opened. And they set that lovely space aside to host these events. And I think that this year we'll probably be doing the 75th concert in the series. So it's quite a run. And we think Fruta, Fruta has always been with us from the start. Either with hard dollars or in-kind services, or just their general support. You know, if I need bike rack barricade, I can call Public Works and, and come over here and pick it up. It's usually stored out here. I didn't see it today. Must be on, being used somewhere, or maybe it's gone back to live at Public Works. But Fruta has just been great. Been a great partner in this. And each year we entertain 2,000 to 4,000 people out there, and we bring them to Fruta, and we hope that they dine in the restaurants, get rooms in the hotels. And just get acquainted with the area. Fruta is really changing. Just in the last two years, you know, what's going on over there by Hot Tomato is, is really cool. And I was, was over there getting a slice of pizza earlier and seeing Copper Club and the adjacent business and Hot Tomato and what you guys are doing with the street. You know, you guys have got a pretty hip town going. It's changed a lot. I graduated high school here in 75. It wasn't so hip. A hip, a hip day in Fruta was to go to the pool hall and play foosball. That's what you guys had going on, but it's changed a lot. You know, mountain biking, it's changed the world. So and you guys have jumped on that and congratulations. But if you have any questions for Paul and I, we're here. We'd be glad to talk to you. What do you think?
All right. Well, what we're going to do is we're going to open up for public comment first, and then we'll come back with any questions. All right. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right, I'm hearing none. Is there anybody online here?
No comments online, Mr.
All right. And we'll close public comment and bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this item?
I'm glad you're back.
Yeah. Yeah, we're glad to have you guys back doing another series of concerts here. So. Yeah. Well, we're glad we can help. All right. With that, do we have a motion on this item?
I'll move to approve the application for a special per, special events liquor permit for the Caral Riverfront Foundation, Inc. To sell alcohol beverage, beverages during the summer 2023 concert series at the James M. Robb Colorado River State Park, subject to the conditions presented by staff.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or?
Do we need to add contingent also on the insurance? As well?
Yes.
I'd like to amend amendments.
Yeah, yeah. And to include the insurance.
Certificate of.
Certificate of insurance.
Second.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Cry. Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Hancy.
Yes.
Counselor Reiman.
Yes.
Counselor Perser. Motion passes five zero.
He's running Paul for being here.
Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. While I've still got the mic for a second.
Hey, we'll start the timer.
I realize that I, I, I also need to, in this forum, need to thank Pete Furman over here, our chief ranger at the state park for his support and guidance along the way. It's been invaluable. And to have a partner in the state parks that, you know, enjoys what we do and hangs with us is an incredible thing. So thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We're going to head over to the Hot Tomato now.
Helen, we said hello.
All right. With that, we're going to move into our second hearing, another special event liquor permit application. And we've got our deputy city clerk Deb Woods presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This second special event liquor permit application was submitted by the Colorado Plateau Mountain Bike Trail Association, otherwise known as COPMOPA for two days of Fruta Fat Tire Festival, plus one day for the Colorado to Utah Gravel Bike Race. The, all three days or nights, rather, the events will be held out here at Civic Center Memorial Park. The Beer Garden will remain in the same place and with the same fencing for all three, all three nights. Diagram of the proposed licensed premises shows the outline in black, consisting of the entire park. And the parking lot will be enclosed with metal fencing and adjacent building walls. COPMOPA volunteers and/or additional paid security personnel will monitor the licensed area, including the entrances, to ensure that no alcohol leaves or enters the area. And patrons will be monitored for signs of becoming noticeably intoxicated. Fruta Chief of Police Dave Kraus reviewed COPMOPA's application and issued a statement that there is nothing that would prohibit the issuance of the license being requested. It is staff's recommendation to the city council that the application for the special event liquor permit be approved, subject to the following conditions. The entrance and exit shall be monitored closely and continuously by event staff in order to prevent alcoholic beverages from going into or out of the licensed area. The licensee needs to be aware that they're solely responsible for control of the licensed premises, and all other procedures presented by COPMOPA will be followed. That concludes my presentation. And representing COPMOPA, we have John Howe with us present in person. And so I will turn it over to John for any additional comments he may have.
Oh, thank you, Deb. And thank you, Mayor Kincaid and council members. We look forward to this coming weekend after next. It's going to be a busy weekend here in Fruta with Fruta Fat Tire Fest on Friday and Saturday, and the Cotuit event on Sunday. So it should be a lot of folks coming in, like a lot of locals and a lot of people from out of town coming to Fruta this, that weekend. So actually, also looking forward to be back in Civic Center Park. It's been a while since we've had an event there, but it's a great venue, and we look forward to having this event on the 12th, 13th, and 14th.
All right. Thanks, John. We're going to open that, this one up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right, I'm hearing none here.
No comments online.
All right, then we'll close public comments and bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments for John or staff? I do. All right.
What? How long is the area going to be blocked off during? The, the, the event starts on Friday, 4:00 PM, goes through Sunday night. What's, how's the setup time going to be? When, when setup going to start?
So that is under the control of the Fruta Fat Tire event sponsor, George Gatchess and Stephen Kurtenbach. I believe that they will start moving tents and, and other fixtures in on Wednesday. I believe the park itself will be closed off on Thursday, then through the end of the event on Sunday. What, there are some street closures as well. I think I showed on the diagram and then, or the Cotuit race, the finish line will be along Aspen Avenue, finishing in front of the, the park.
What are, how are we going to deal with accommodating access to the building for citizens?
Well, this is, that's how, this, we're just approving a liquor license.
Yeah, this is, this is not for the event. Yeah, that, that goes through an internal special event process that's going through already. And we check those boxes off and make sure that tonight is a public hearing simply for.
Okay. Gotcha. I'll bring that up later.
It, it, the, the rest doesn't come to council. It's a special event application through staff.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right.
Move to approve the application for the special events liquor permits from the Colorado Plateau Mountain Bike Trail Association, COPMOPA, to provide a beer garden during the combined 2023 events of Fruta Fat Tire Festival and Cotuit at Civic Center Memorial Park, and the dates and times requested, subject to the conditions stated by staff.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Deb, would you please poll?
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Hancy.
Yes.
Counselor Reiman.
Yes.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. With that, we're going to move into, we've got one legislative hearing tonight, and it's Resolution 2023-11, amending the 2023 budget. We've got our assistant city manager, Shannon Vassen, here to present.
Uh, thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council for the opportunity to present. Resolution 2023-11 is a supplemental appropriation of funds for the general fund, the Conservation Trust Fund, the Community Center Fund, and the Capital Projects Fund. As always, anytime we have a supplemental budget amendment, I try to summarize the revenue and the expenses in a table at the end of the cover sheet. So I can just go over a few of the highlights that I have for specific supplemental appropriation. We received $10,500 in special event sponsorships for the Mike Tyler's Chicken Festival that can be used for entertainment and supplies and equipment. Those were received from local businesses. We have a small contribution going to the Vietnam War Memorial to replace on the sidewalk that needs some fixing over there. We also received $31,000 from the Caral Department of Human Services for expenses related to childcare programs. So in this case, we will use that grant funding to help with some additional dynamite's costs and bringing on additional staff to help with dynamites during the summer. This one, we've talked about before, but we did receive our final insurance payment from SIRSa for the flooding of the gym floor. They reimbursed us for all expenses associated with the replacement and the demolition of the original gym floor. So we received, I want to say it was around 40,000 last year, and then we got, just received this payment of 135,000 this year for the gym floor, and also we bought a portable volleyball net. So those enrolled in youth volleyball could use that while the gym floor was closed. And then we received a $600,000 grant from GOCO for improvements to Reed Park, and we have one rollover revenue from the prior year. In the 2023 budget, we anticipated spending about $150,000 on the design for Reed Park. We only spent about 49 of that. So this just rolls over an additional funds just for any engineering and design cost we may have with the final project. With that, that concludes. With that, that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Always happy to take questions after public comment. Thank you.
With this one, we're gonna open it up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity. All right, I'm hearing none. Anybody online?
No comments online.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions for Shannon on this one? All right, hearing none. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven, amending the twenty twenty-three budget to appropriate funds in the gen- general fund, the Conservation Trust Fund, the Fruta Community Center Fund, and the Capital Projects Fund for capital projects, repairs at the Fruta Community Center, parks repair and maintenance, youth activities and special events and projects, and reappropriating funds in the Capital Projects Fund for a capital project originally included in the twenty twenty-two annual budget.
Second. All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Cry. Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, with that, we're gonna move into our city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just a couple items tonight. First, I want to recognize Wyatt and Byron from our Political Science three forty-two introduction of public administration. Thanks for being here. You've you are our audience tonight at this point in time after, but thanks for being here.
Require them to talk at public.
I I I gave them a look, but they didn't. I guess I passed up the extra credit on that. No. The great students, great class that we're winding up next week, and we did also want to mention that as we near the completion of the Mulberry Street Plaza, we are starting to plan for some kind of way to celebrate. We're looking less at a ribbon cutting type thing, because once it's, once it's complete, it'll just be, start being used. But we're looking at having some kind of small activity towards the end of the month where maybe something with smores that families could come down, do smores with the fire pit, maybe some music, something like that, and invite people to come celebrate that it's open. Once we have some of the additional things that will be added even after the the construction area is open again soon. But if you have ideas that you'd like us to consider for that, please let us know quickly, or if you wanna, I didn't wanna like throw that at you to have some discussion now necessarily, but if you have any initial thoughts, if you'd rather do a more formal ribbon cutting, but we were looking at something towards the end of the month, early June, end of, end of May, outside of one of the nights that we have events going on downtown and start getting the word out about about that. It's just a celebration that it's that it's complete. All right.
Smores sounds good.
Yes, more sound good. If too many people should, there's only one fire pit, so we might, we might, we'll just take turns.
If I remember right, I'm okay with.
I remember that, too. All right. That's everything. Yeah, thank you.
That was quick. All right, that's what we like. All right, we're gonna move into council reports and actions. Anybody wanna start? Amy?
I was actually just making my notes to make sure I remembered.
So you didn't forget?
Yeah. I, a few of us attended the summit, the economic summit this week, which was really great. Our mayor pro tem represented Fruta beautifully at at the the panel. So well done, sir. The Historic Preservation Board met and just kind of reviewed the history fair that happened last Saturday. I was not able to attend. I was out of town, but I heard, hear it went smashingly. They had over six hundred attendees and they're really excited about the collaborations that they have going with Mesa County Historic Preservation, and I think Palisade has a group, and then Redlands does as well. So they have some new, new blood coming in and some new enthusiasm. So our, our group is excited about that. And then they also are finalizing design for the plaques to add to our homes that are on the Fruta Historic Registry. So some of the houses have plaques, but not all of them, and the ones that do are, they're pretty worn and outdated. So that, yeah, so they're looking at replacing those, and the designs they come up with are pretty cool. I'm excited about that. So. And then I did have one concerned citizen, I've spoken with her actually several times over the last week from our, our Red Cliffs neighborhood. They're having some struggles with irrigation and their HOA and so we're kind of brainstorming on ways that we can support them to our best ability without overstepping. But there's.
We had, we usually have an annual HOA with the city, don't we, Mike? Has that happened yet or no? Where they talk with, they invite the different HOAs and?
Yeah, typically, it's it's more we go present to them if they, if they like, or we send information out. This is, this is this is a different situation where their HOA is no longer, but they have, neighborhood has needs, and they recognize that they're not things the city can actually do, but we've been trying to help connect them with the right resources or agencies or people. And and sounds like they're gathering people to take those right steps and just checking in with us and we we got another question this morning that we're working on, trying to get back to, or yesterday that we're working on, trying to get back to them. Looking at some of the approvals of, original approvals of the subdivision that may help them make sure they have that information as they look at what to do moving forward, but a difficult situation when you have an HOA and then then you don't, and you know, irrigation's turning on and all these things, but no one has what's needed to to make those decisions.
Wanna make sure we have the.
Yeah, and everybody, everybody's been great, but I just wanted to kind of update you guys that that is a conversation that's happening. So and.
Which, what's the city community again and where it's at?
It's the, the Red Cliffs Trailer Park over by the, by Red Cliffs. Yeah. I think that's all I've got.
Aaron?
Couple thing, like, like, three, three items. One, just wanna continue off the conversation with the special event. Are we, do we? I guess my concern there is just access to the building when things are getting set up for the the festival in a couple of weekends that it's covering a Thursday, which is always a big DMV day. And then just how it's blocking off ADA access up, plus taking over parking.
Yeah, after the, after the last one, we talked to everybody to make sure it doesn't happen again. So. Yeah. So it should, we should be good.
Saturday was that military event where we had a proclamation for all the high school graduates that are taking the oath to join the military after high school, and it was awesome. We had a really good turnout for Fruta. And then we had people from all over the valley, then also Rangeli. So that was, it was fun. And it was the first time in three years, I think, with everything going on to have these future cadets take the oath in public. So that was fun for, for everyone involved. I guess I wanted to say a couple of things with the economic summit. I had some great conversations. Sorry, I missed you, Matt, but I, I knew you'd do well and wanted to go check out another one, and it was, it was a good experience there to. I believe that was a past experience was the
learning.
I went to, but it was, it was kind of nice to get different insights that I think would be effective for us to discuss. One is really just being that decisive and intentional goals with some things like, it just made me think of like the industrial parks, like how can we make progress with the industrial park and lagoons or things like that. It's like, I just liked how they were just talking about intentional. Let's see. Oh, and it also reminded me of just the I'm blanking on the words. Economic development, and I thought we had talked about Mike before of a trip down to Montrose.
Oh, yeah.
Just wanna make sure that that's not forgotten.
No, we're just still trying to coordinate with them. They, they had some election change, or they had a they had a change with their mayor and then just some things going on. So I talked to them at the conference. And they're open to it. I said, we'd rather do it sooner than later. So we've got to start comparing some dates. But it would be good to kind of get an idea from you all, because it's obviously not like a quick thing. You'd have to travel down there early afternoon, you know, do some touring, have the chance to meet with them, possibly with, have dinner and then drive back. So it'd be hard to do it, you know, like we normally do right before a meeting or something like that. So I think possible Monday nights sounded like they might be open. So what I was going to do is trying to make sure, get some dates that work for them and then get those out to you all to kind of check your schedules and see what we could, we could do before we spend too much time finding a bunch of dates and they don't work with them. So. But I did follow up with them on that. Originally, they were wanting to do it in June, July, but I talked to him at the conference about, I mean, it could end up being that, but we need to get it on the calendar. So.
I think that with us just discussing offline at the, the conference, it might be good for us to go take tours and have discussions again with, with industrial park and to bring it fresh up to my mind. And I also, like, the gentleman from Course Tech, he made some good comments on his experiences. They're working on a sixty-five million dollar multi-year expansion onto Course Tech and just he, he talked about various struggles with their process, and it'd be interesting just to hear back from what, could be interesting to have him come in on like a workshop or or present. And how we could learn from his experience. I know we have a great planning and building department. But it was just that falls in line with the, the thoughts of industrial park and lagoons and all that. It's like, how can being proactive and decisive there? So those are just some highlights that I took from from that, and that's it.
Thanks, Aaron. Matthew?
All right, it's been a busy week. It's getting with the GJAP on that panel. But I do want to say thank you, Mike, for all the prep notes. I was cramming for two days and rehearsing in front of a mirror to make sure I represented us well. Amy, thank you for not taking really embarrassing pictures. This picture totally cracks me up.
Love it.
Just, it's amazing what you can do in three minutes with Photoshop.
Did anyone catch that Matthew has photoshopped into that?
Oh.
I wasn't.
Great job.
Yeah, I determined, I was like, we forgot to get a picture before you left. You needed to be on the W, and three minutes later, I got that back. I was like, oh, good job.
I walked down the hall, had somebody take a picture of me, did a quick Photoshop and threw it in.
I will say, the three of us working on it, we're at two different conferences, doing it during sessions, taking notes. So we were, we were flying like, oh, great picture.
Great.
Put it in there.
Um, couple other things. So I was a judge at CMU for the board competition for the hospitality and marketing classes. That was great. There's some really smart kids out there. I was also at the CMU session for the rebrand of WCCC, so that'll be interesting to see what comes from that. I think they've got some good stuff going on. Monument Ridge Elementary for Arbor Day. I don't know if Mark is still here. Great job to his team. I wish I could remember the gentleman's name from the ARCS department, who was the most entertaining, like, got kids at this great level and was so entertaining. He was, I wish I could remember the gentleman's name, but he was.
That Jason.
We need to have him present.
Oh, yeah, he was.
Sean.
Right. He made that a lot of fun. The Fruta Chamber had an event at Sparks Fly Studio where we got to see two things. One, the logs that are going in the fire pit. Those are really kind of cool. And the Fruta Chamber of Commerce sign is finally almost done, and it looks absolutely amazing. So that was my week.
Sounds like a busy week.
So it was a fun week.
Yep, along with the leaf painting and all of that, it was also the first Fruta Fourth Friday event by the Arts and Culture Board, and that went off amazingly well. Yeah, it was very, very successful. I don't, I know Matthew already said he was downtown Friday, but i- if you weren't, next time, because it was just unbelievable, the amount of people and activity all over the place.
It was.
Everybody was doing. It was just a happy place to be. And also, the economic summit, summit was good. I do have a couple suggestions for GJAP, and I can hand those off later to you.
Happy to talk about those.
Okay. Unless they have a way to submit those outside of that. Oh, okay.
Very good.
Okay, I I may just do that, but and that's it.
Thanks, Janine. Ken?
GRVTC met last week. Not much to report back. They have old buses that need a lot of work. They've got buses on order. Made some amendments to the transportation plan. Anyway, I I did hear from Jason when, I think he's gonna be appointed to take Dennis Simpson's place, so see if he brings a he ran on a lot of multimodal stuff, so maybe some big things coming out. Who knows? Depends. We'll see. That's, that's all the meetings I've had.
All right, I, well, I just had that interview with the Fruta F-TAC with James, but coming forward tomorrow, seven A. M. Free breakfast, bike to work day, bring your bike down.
Do we have to bike or can we just come?
You just come. There's, that was a lot of people that had free breakfast last year. Is that, I don't think anybody biked last year. We had students that came down and they got some food and before they biked to school, but they didn't go on the tour with.
There's a couple people that biked last year.
There was a few.
We'll do a, we'll do a ride after with whoever wants to ride around for a moment.
Yeah.
I know middle school knows about it.
Oh, yeah.
He's like.
Free breakfast tomorrow morning.
The great group last year.
Tell me he has to bite there from your house, though. All right. So we've got that going on, then Matthew and I are presenting the Scout Troop three twenty-three on Monday, so that'll be fun.
So here's, because I've not presented the fifth graders before, that's an intimidating group of kids. Like, there, yeah, so I'm.
That's why they have troop leaders there.
Yeah, I'm curious to see how this is gonna go.
Just thinking about, ask Mike about the Girl Scout troops is probably gonna be tougher than the Boy Scout troop.
Right.
Yeah. So that's what I've got moving forward here. So that is all I've got. So with that, then our next item is to move into executive session for consideration of offer to purchase and the process for sale of real property. And so we'll have to have a motion on that one. And just so everybody knows in the audience, once we go to go in an executive session, then it'll close the public meeting for you guys. So but we do appreciate you guys being here and learning maybe a little bit more about what happens in our local government. All right, do we have a?
Can I interrupt for a second, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You, there may be action items after the executive session. So I know that's not listed, but it it could, there could be some additional open meeting. It will be up to Mike if he makes his student stay.
At that point, we'll do it, we've had two executive sessions, so we do it between the two, depending on what it is. Correct. Okay, all right. So yes, we may, we may come back into our meeting, but we're not sure what time, so.
Is that extra credit, Mike?
Yeah, if they stay around. All right, do we have a motion to move into executive session?
I move, we go into executive to set session to discuss the consideration of an offer to purchase and the process for sale. Real property owned by the city, specifically Eunice Lake Real Property and its water rights pursuant to Colorado Vice Statutes twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four A to develop a strategy for negotiations and to instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E and to receive legal advice from the city attorney pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B regarding the same, and to discuss the consideration of a possible sale of real property owned by the city, specifically property.
I lost it.
Owned by the city, specifically properties just smaller parcels located near Eunice Lake as a separate transaction pursuant to Colorado Vice Statutes twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four A to develop a strategy for negotiations and to instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E and to receive legal advice from the city attorney pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B regarding the same.
Nicely done, sir.
I'm so grateful that you always read those. Say, we have a second?
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel, Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Hi.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, did anybody need a quick break, a five-minute break? Because we're gonna have to go into another.